I forgot, just a warning before we start the meeting. There's instructions, you only have to push the button once and not hold it down. So, yes, I'll have to remember that myself. I'm calling the Fairfield RTM September 15th, 2025 Joint Committee Presentation to Order at 7:30 PM. I will now take the role. Matt Ambrose, Karen Asterita, Steve Barrett, Rob Blanchard, Lenny Bremen, Peter Britton. Okay, sorry, I got Lenny.
I'm here.
Thank you. Peter Britton, Chris Carroll, Colin Colburn, Justin Contrato, Tara Cook-Lipman.
Here.
Nancy Donnie, Eric Juniak, Bob Elwinger, Lori Galdunzi.
Here.
Josh Garshoff, Drew Giorgiades.
Here.
Mike Cardigan, Lisa Havy, Margaret Horton.
Here.
Laura Carson, John Kuhn, Melissa Longo, Christine Ledwig-Sack, Michelle McCabe, Megan McCleod, Mark McDermott.
Here.
Scott Nickel, Kristen O'Neal, Alexandra Ocampo, Sharon Pistilli, Pierre Bratsky, David Rock.
Here.
Christopher Shea, Brooke Sparcino, Marcy Spoilera, I'm here, Jeff Steele, Karen Wackerman, Cindy Waldron, Jay Woke, and Elizabeth Zesma.
Here.
Thank you, let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, the RTM leadership consisting of Deputy Moderator Horton, Majority Leader Zesma, Minority Leader Steele, Deputy Majority Leader Pistilli, Deputy Minority Leader Asterita, and myself have a bipartisan statement we want to share. We're going to go up to the presentation table. I'm going to read this statement. "We, the leaders of the Fairfield Representative Town Meeting, are deeply disturbed by the recent acts of political violence that have shaken our nation. We stand together, not as partisans, but as colleagues, citizens, elected officials, and most importantly, neighbors, united in our unequivocal condemnation of these heinous acts. Violence has no place in our democracy, and must never be used to silence voices, suppress opinions, or advance political agendas, regardless of ideology. As representatives of this community, we share a common purpose, to serve Fairfield and uphold the democratic values that bind us together. We call on all elected officials and leaders at all levels and our community at large to embrace civility in our public discourse and online interactions. We condemn speech. Words matter. We are committed to civil discourse, honest debate, and meaningful dialogue grounded in mutual respect. While policy disagreements are inevitable, we resolve to engage with dignity, inclusion, and grace. Let us all lead by example and work together respectfully to strengthen our democracy." Thank you all, and I hope we can all take this into consideration. Got this one, this one's, this one stays live. Next up, we have Attorney, Town Attorney Pierce here to discuss Agenda Item 3, which is to give permission to authorize the preparation of explanatory texts with respect to charter ballot questions. This can be found on page 1 of our backup. Welcome.
Good evening, so, as I think everyone's probably aware, the Board of Selectmen approved proposed revisions to the charter and adopted seven questions to go on the ballot. The statute provides the option for the town to have explanatory text prepared that explains the purposes and intent of the questions on the ballot. But it requires an authorization from the legislative body for that to happen, so that's what this is. If the body approves it, then that text is prepared by the town clerk in consultation with my office. And it would be available to the voters to help educate them about what the questions are about. If this resolution's not adopted, then the only information that would be available at the ballot box would be the seven questions themselves. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, are there any questions for Attorney Pierce, Representative Garshoff?
Thank you, Josh Garshoff, District 5. Can you remind us, Attorney Pierce? Do the questions represent all the changes being proposed, and will the explanatory text represent all the changes being proposed? Or is it limited, explanatory text limited to the questions?
So, the six questions have, the board felt it was important to peel out six issues. So the first six questions are six isolated issues. And then the seventh question is an omnibus question that captures all the remaining changes. For that question, I mean, there's a lot of changes, so the explanatory text won't go into so much detail about what the remainder of the challenges, of the changes are. Thank you. Sad answer.
Yeah, I think so, thanks.
Representative Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Chris Carroll, District 8. Phil, just to be clear, this language, is this on the ballot, or it's available someplace else before stepping into fill out your ballot?
It can either be disseminated with the ballot, or it can be available at the polling location. It has to at least be available at the polling location.
Who makes that decision of where it goes?
I believe it's the town clerk's office, because they have to decide, approve what goes, submit what goes on the ballot.
So I guess the only question I'd have to the moderator is, and maybe something we discuss next week, in approving this, I would think you put it on the ballot. Because we know voters, we assume voters don't do a lot of research ahead of time. They show up. And this doesn't make any sense to me, well, you should have read what was outside. So that, I think that would be a consideration.
Yeah, this, I mean, the statute says as determined by the town clerk. I think, I personally, I don't think that that should be a consideration for whether you pass this or not, because if you don't pass it, then there's no text.
Right.
So.
And the town clerk will be here next week if you want to ask that question.
Yes, he will, thank you.
My expectation, oh, we can talk to the town clerk about it. I think it's going to be on the ballot, which, I mean, it's a balance, because there's less information that you're going to make available then, but it will be more accessible.
In the past, too, on the walls of the polling locations, there's been like, a big poster board with the explanation on there as well. So, Representative Giorgiades?
Drew Giorgiades, District 9, hi Phil. To follow up on Representative Garshoff's question, so, item 7 covers mostly language, and the other one are more policy?
No, I mean, it's, the first six questions are just issues of either significance or interest, that the board felt it was important to make them separate ballot questions, so they can be acted upon separately. Question 7 is all other changes. Some of them are substantive changes, it just didn't call for a separate question. Like, one change is Conservation Commission, currently appointed by the First Selectmen, which is a little odd. It's changing, proposed to be changed to the Board of Selectmen. That's covered by the catch-all question, just as an example.
Thank you. Representative Asterita?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Karen Asterita, District 1. Is there, is there like a final, like, does the board, after you draft them with the town clerk, does the Board of Selectmen then sign off on the explanations? Or that, that's once the approval, the two of you work in tandem, you come up with the explanations, and that's it?
No, it's, it's prepared by the town clerk with the town attorney. That's what the statute says.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Steele.
Jeff Steele, District 3, just following up on this, this line of questioning. Did you say when the timing would be for these explanations, and will they be in the newspaper? How will, how will the population and those who are voting have information way beforehand, so that it's not just at the polls, where they're looking at the walls, saying, what's this? And what's, you know, I look at number 6, for example, changing the seal. I'm sure there'll be a lot of people like, why, why are we changing the shield, the seal? Will that information be provided ahead of time, like, way ahead of time, so people can think about a lot of this?
So, this, this allows the town to do whatever it wants with the questions. So my expectation would be, the town would share the explanatory texts broadly to raise awareness and help educate people. Just to be clear on 6, question 6, it's not saying we want to change the town's seal, it just is providing a mechanism to change it. Because right now, the charter specifies that we must, we are required to use the seal adopted in like, 1935. So this just says, the RTM decides what the seal is.
Okay, I mean, like, people may ask, well, why do, why are we even talking about changing the seal? Like, what's the reasoning that we're changing the seal?
But we're, but that, the question doesn't change the seal at that point.
I mean, I know, it gives us.
It opens up a potential process to change the seal.
Okay.
Thank you, any other questions? If anyone has any questions online? Seeing none, thank you, Attorney Pierce, we appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, which are the Dwight School Committee Appointments. Backup for this item can be found on pages 2 to 23. I think we have two members from the board possibly here, so I'm going to give them preference. If you're on the Dwight School Committee Board, if one of the members that is present wants to come up to the desk, or, that would be great. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you want to be on this committee.
Hi, I'm John Purcell.
Welcome, Mr. Purcell.
Thank you. I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Fairfield. I went through the Fairfield Public School System myself. I have two children who are graduates of the Fairfield School System. And I personally have about 30 years of experience leading real estate for multi-billion dollar multinational companies. My experience includes construction, design, budgeting, and deployment of real estate assets, not specifically schools, but warehouses, R&amp;D centers, offices, and the rest. So, I have a very strong foundation, I think, in the principles of design, construction, and building. And I think I can add a lot of value. I have a kind of, probably a different perspective from the other committee members on this. And I think each of us brings kind of our own individual experience and perspective to the table. And I think that I can add a lot of value, and I'm very happy that I was kind of asked if I had interest. And I am very honored to have the opportunity to serve.
We thank you for stepping forward. Are there any questions for Mr. Purcell, Representative Giorgiades?
This is a comment, not a question. I've known John, or Percy, as I call him, for 34 years. Upstanding guy, so, he has my vote.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming. Our town clerk will let you know if we need to see you next week, thank you. Are you, I'm sorry ma'am, are you here for the Dwight School Building? No, okay, so we'll go to online, I see Laura, Lauren Efrin, if Fair TV will unmute Lauren Efrin. I'll have her tell us a little bit about herself and why she wants to serve on this board. I still see her muted. Oh, there she is. Welcome, Ms. Efrin.
Hi, I'm here.
I'm sorry. I called you.
It's okay, I'm at McKinley, I apologize.
No, it's great, great view. Welcome.
Thank you so much, I just want to say that I've been actively following the Dwight process, Dwight 2.0, as I lovingly like to call it, for the past three years. And I've really gotten to see, as a past BTA president, as a parent of three, and still a current parent, the ins and outs. I've gone to every Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Board of Ed meeting where Dwight has been on the agenda. And it's been a really eye-opening process. So I'd like to think that while I don't have any technical experience, I've got a lot of information that would hopefully be helpful. And I really would like to say to everybody in the room right now that we, I think in general, not just the Dwight community, but as I've spoken to several members of other elementary schools, we really would like to build a school for the future, for all students of Fairfield, for ECC, for CLC. And we'd like to be very cautious in our spending, we'd like to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. So, yeah, that's me.
Thank you very much, are there any other, any questions for Ms. Efrin? Representative O'Neal?
Hi, Representative O'Neal, District 5. This is not a question, but I know Mrs. Efrin from her advocacy for Dwight and for all of our public schools. And I just want to say that she would do an excellent job on this committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming out, our town clerk will let us know if you need to come back next week, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, I see Peggy Magaluso listed as iPad 2 online. If Fair TV will unmute Peggy.
Hi, I'm Peggy Magaluso, I live on Riverside Drive. Before moving to Fairfield, I lived in Easton for 25 years. When I lived there, I served on the Helen Keller Middle School Building Committee and the New Staples School Building Committee. So I, I'm kind of familiar with the process, even though it was a few years ago. I am also self-employed, and I design plumbing and fire protection systems for commercial buildings. I've been in the industry for about 30 years, self-employed for 25.
Thank you, thank you for stepping up, are there any questions or comments? For Ms. Magaluso. I don't see any, but thank you so much for stepping up, we appreciate you volunteering for this, and our town clerk will let us know if you need to come next week, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking online and in person, and I don't see Diana Lizzo, Joseph Diorio, or Nicole Olson. If any of you are online, listed under a different name, if you could type in the chat box that you're here, and what name you're under. I don't see any of those people, so hopefully, we'll see them next, in two weeks. And I apologize for anyone that's still here that just spoke, our meeting is not next week, it's in two weeks, because there's a Jewish holiday on next Monday. So, I'm used to seeing that, but I apologize. We're going to move on to our next item. Last month, we had a presentation on the ethics ordinance, this month, we will vote on the ethics ordinance. As a reminder, ordinances cannot be on the consent calendar. Tonight, we have sponsors Asterita, Steele, Carson, Zesma, O'Neal, and Wackerman here to answer any further questions. I don't know that there needs to be a presentation, but if anyone has any questions, we also have Attorney Pierce here, if there's any questions for him regarding this item. It's Agenda Item 3, and can be found on backup pages 24 to 30. Are there any questions regarding the ethics ordinance, or any comments? Seeing none, going once. Don't see any, okay. Oh, Chris, Representative Carroll?
Chris Carroll, District 8, and I apologize, as you can tell, I was a little discombobulated today. No, it's on, you don't hold it, you can't hear me?
Now we can, yeah, thank you.
Let me talk right in there. There was, there was a follow-up question, and I apologize. And I don't recall it being answered in any communication back out, and I can't remember it, so I will write you a note.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's in my notes, and I didn't even ask the question, somebody else did, and it's not being followed up upon, so I'll get it to you, but I just want to get that on the record, that there is.
Right, if you could get it to me by Wednesday, that would be great, so we can have a follow-up.
Wednesday, at what time?
Oh, actually, we have two weeks, but the sooner the better.
I'll send it to you in the morning.
The sooner the better would be wonderful, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. I don't think there's anything else, so before we break off into our committees.
Madam Moderator, just, just a quick question.
Yep, Representative Asterita?
Yeah, on item number four, are we required to approve that committee in its entirety, or can we approve, you know, specific?
So, in your committees, if you want to make a motion to break it up, and then just approve like, the three people that were present versus the three that aren't, you can certainly do that. That way, they'll know that they had, you know, unanimous support, hopefully, or whatnot, so. Any other, oh, Representative Horton?
Oh, wait, sorry, Margaret Horton, District 10. So, Mr. Peterson, who is the BOE Chair, is he, my understanding is, we don't need to vote for him to be on the committee, correct? He is by default on the committee?
Correct, he's by default on the committee, so, to my knowledge, he's not running again for election, so when there's a new chair, that chair will take over that position just naturally.
Madam Moderator, one more question, sorry.
Sure.
Megan McCleod, District 2, this question is regarding the ethics, the ethics ordinance, and it can be either for Representative Wackerman or Attorney Pierce. When I had asked a question about this, I'd never got a follow-up answer. I'm a little confused with the application of subsection G for participation in grievance proceedings would apply. If you recall, Representative Wackerman, I was confused how we could actually legally preclude somebody from participating, especially if it was in an administrative proceeding where there was subpoena power. So when, can you give an example of when this would apply and why it's included in this ordinance?
Yeah, Karen Wackerman, District 9, sorry, I thought I did answer this, but maybe not. I talked to with Attorney Pierce, and we both weren't positive we could think of an example, although someone, I think it was Representative Pistilli last week, or last month, mentioned the possibility that someone could have retired and serve on a board, but they might have been connected to, serve on the RTM, and might have been connected to something. I don't know for sure, but I also, I think Attorney Pierce and I both thought it doesn't hurt to leave it in, there's no sin in it, because it would be prohibited if it was something that did happen, but.
So there was no intent behind the inclusion, it's just leaving it in from prior ordinance, or?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So, I was in the drafter of this, but I think the intent of it is, it prevents public officials from participating in the disposition of a grievance when they're bound by the contract. So, they're, at that, at that point, they're kind of on both sides, because they're adjudicating the dispute and they're bound by the contract. So I think this is just another provision to prevent conflict of interest. If you decided to strike it, there, I'm sure that there are other provisions you could point to in the ordinance to make that impermissible.
Okay. It just seems somewhat strange that we would put a, I mean, somebody, somebody could be required to comment on something they were a part of at a time at which they were a town employee, and they might now subsequently be a public official. But if they're a witness in an administrative proceeding, I don't know how we can ethically preclude them from testifying.
Yeah, I mean, if they're obligated by law to testify, I don't think that would be.
We'd have to waive this provision.
I don't think that that would constitute a violation of the ordinance, I think what this is designed to do, it's like a similar, like, there are similar prohibitions in the, in the ordinance about, you know, you can't appear before a body of which you were a member within a certain period of time, and it's to prevent people from being on both sides of the aisle.
Just seems a little misplaced, but that's my opinion for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McCabe.
Michelle McCabe, District 4. Following up on.
Following up on Representative McLeod's question, I'm curious if the sort of important piece of this section is the phrase "on behalf of the town." It seems like that might be describing a very specific instant, instance where the public official can't participate specifically on behalf of the town and be subject to the thing that is at question. So, if that public official, for example, is subject to the contract, it means that they can limit their activity to the contract as the aggrieved party or whatever, but they can't simultaneously act on behalf of the town. It's like you have to pick one or the other.
Right, so if, if somebody is subject to a contract, they can't then negotiate the contract on the town's behalf to give the employees more benefits, because at that point, I mean, they're, I mean, it's, right, it's potentially self-serving. So, that's the, that's what it's designed to prohibit. Like I said, if you struck it, there's probably other provisions here that would cover it, it's very specific.
Megan McLeod, District 2. I think, the example I'm thinking of is in a lot of other municipalities, former employees end up running for high office. I can think of a couple of surrounding towns where the former chief of police is actually the first selectman or the mayor. So, if you're talking about a grievance of something that pertains to perhaps the police contract from perhaps two years ago, in which case the member was actually a member of the union, and now they're the first selectman of the town, we'd find ourselves in a, in a bind, because they're the appointing authority of the municipality that would have to sign off often on arbitration proceedings. So, I just, I'm not sure the way that it's worded is actually going to impact, like you said, I think it would be covered by other provisions, but it's just a technical point I wish to raise, when I raised it last time, to Rep. Weckerman, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Representative Carroll, that was your question? Great. Thank you. Any other questions? I think I already said going once and going twice. All right, thank you. Before we break off into our committees, I just want to remind everyone that we have two weeks until our voting meeting due to Monday being a Jewish holiday. I wish all who celebrate a Happy New Year. We will see you all on the 29th. We will now break off into our respective committees. For those online, please see the bottom of the warning for numbers to call into your respective committees. Chairs, please remember to record the meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 7:58 PM. Thank you.